Advisory committees, you know, to that, that group and had discussion and more input. And so.
Let's ask Alicia, let's ask Alicia. Alicia, are you still there?
Alicia, are you still there?
I can't hear.
How about your microphone? Okay, we cannot hear you. We can't hear you.
The reason I'm asking Alicia is to reinforce what Kathy's saying on the elementary level. I know we don't gonna know what it's look like, but I got a picture in my mind how it's gonna be. And, and these people are saying that they can do it. And who else are you gonna trust if you don't trust your administration?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, you talk about doing your research. I have done research and there's a number of schools that already voted on their exact plan. Their school board voted on what exactly is gonna be going on.
Sure.
And right now, I'm just saying, I don't even know what exactly is gonna be going on, so.
Okay, now we can hear you, Alicia.
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear Alicia?
Hello?
Oh, there.
We only hear her off your computer and that's it?
Yep, my, my, do you have your volume all the way up, Alicia?
Yeah.
How about if I do this?
Alicia, what I'm looking for you, from you, is to reinforce what Kathy's saying about your committees being ready to open this school up to all kids coming to our classroom.
Yeah. So, can you hear me if I'm talking?
Yep.
Okay. I think what would probably put your mind at ease and probably put all of our families' minds at ease is that we've prepared a communication guide that we can send out really quickly. And the guide, it has a flow chart of what's happening in the days. And it has a list of all the major things that they would want to know now. Without all the tiny little details that the committees need to work out, it would have enough where they would feel pretty good about what they're seeing. I think that's something that our administrative team can positively push out right away. So we just need to redo the numbers on it based on today. I think maybe I already did, I can't remember. But, so the plan, I think, would really reassure, the overview would reassure everybody. So with going in person, I think the biggest thing that's unknown would be the time shift. And I do think that would have to happen really quickly, the turnaround of information. For that would have to happen very quickly because in order for us to proceed with scheduling and creating new procedures, that will take a monumental effort and a lot of coordination, which we can do. But we'll have to get that information from families as soon as humanly possible. And I know they will cooperate with us if we communicate really well. So some of the plans that we're talking about, I have a document that I'd be happy to share. It's like a working draft that just tweets what possible changes would happen in every single area. Anywhere from entry to the building and exit to the building, to recess, to scheduling bathroom breaks, scheduling the flow of traffic, to scheduling classroom cleaning, how to separate little ones and how to teach them how to do that. And with all those little pieces, I just wanna share with families that the whole purpose of all of it is to keep kids in school as long as possible. And so if everybody understands the reason for all the change, that we're changing little things to childcare and all these little moving parts and special ed and title and all of that, they'll understand the intricacies as it applies to them. So, you know, if we get the broad overview out and if we, if we come on across the school schedule that we work with that, then I think everything else is pretty much gonna be ready to push out as soon as possible. And I don't know, Kathy, Kathy's telling you, I don't think it needs to all be approved by you, but that if there was a big change, that, that would have to be a change that's approved, you know, come August 24th.
Okay, thank you. Now, Brian, what you're saying is you, you'd like, actually like a book to show this is what's gonna happen.
Okay, I might be explaining, you know, and some of it might be me not explaining.
Okay.
Okay. What if I do believe in, 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 you know, deep down, yes, I agree they should be here, okay? But, but I also agree that they should be here, 'cause I like the staggered start feeling. But see, right now, none of that's, none of that's happening, you know, you, you can't, nobody can guarantee me that that's happening, okay? So, now if I deep down think they're gonna, should be here, but I don't like all the congestion that could possibly happen if they don't stagger start, then you know what? I might wish I would have voted against having in-person to start with.
Right.
You know, I, I wish maybe I voted for, you know, a different, different scenario. In-person for elementary and, you know, but, but see, none of that can, you know, so I don't know how to vote, is what I'm saying. I, I don't know, you know, it, it depends on how this goes, is, is, is how I would vote, so.
I agree.
Right now, tonight, I'll be voting no, because there's too many unknowns.
Okay, so, so here's, let me, let me further explain this then. We are planning for hybrid learning. So we're putting into place a very stringent type of environment in our school to protect our kids and our staff so that we can continue to be working with in, in-person teaching and learning. And so we're going on the side of being super cautious with everything. All we need from you, if you don't wanna take a vote today, all we need from you is consensus to continue to plan for in-person learning because there are 65-plus percent of the people who have, who actually performed that survey that said they want their kids to return back to school. They want in-person learning. And they were saying that without even knowing for sure exactly what it was going to look like. If, you know, they want it to come back to normal school.
Can you answer this question?
Sure.
Perhaps this is the big mystery that we're all missing. What does the school day look like? We have, in elementary, you have kids that go to gym, to music, to science, to lunch, to bathroom breaks, to that stuff. Our snack time, are we having the, the other teachers come into one classroom? Are we having the kids transfer around the school? Are we staggering the times that each classroom is leaving their classrooms? Like, kind of what does that look like? I think that's the big question, is what does this day actually look like?
Okay, Alicia, thank you.
Yeah, can you answer that? And I would like to put that out there as soon as possible, as soon as humanly possible. What it would look like is that every single transition is planned out and where they go block and at what time and how far apart. Every bathroom break is scheduled on a shared document. And there is also then a secondary or something that comes up, the bathroom, what's the procedure for using the roster for that? We have hand washing protocols. We have a specialist protocol for each specialist. So for, for example, library, the kids have to shop, you have to learn to do online shopping for their book instead of handling all the books in the shelves. And they have to go in, in staggered little bunches. The thing we have going for us is we have so much space. So we can kind of put kids on like centers and rotations and pods where they're distanced. And then with music, we have the capability of hosting it in that room while social distancing. It's huge. We actually have many different air purifiers for that room. And we have, for PE, we have like the world's largest gym. And we have a teacher who already has a classroom that's structured for individualized stations and instruction. And then we plan to utilize outdoor spaces on every possible day until we hit those weather requirements where it's not safe to be outside. So we plan outdoor classroom for our teachers as much as possible as well. And we have been discussing what would it possibly look like when we go, if we were to gain more students where we go past that hybrid recommendation? So then we're already talking about using staff differently. For title, we won't be pulling out and putting kids in and out of that room. We'll push in with adults who follow safety protocols, much like a health person would follow going in and out of patient rooms. And we have, you know, a recess plan that's totally different for each grade level and, and the grade levels have to go out separately. We have an in-person pickup and exit plan that's very different than anything we've done before. And of course, that will hinge on the times. But we have food service plans and snack plans that are different. So everything done to purposefully try to keep the kids safe and in school much longer, hopefully.
Kathy? There would be also some, some students would be eating in their classrooms. Some students would be eating in the commons area. And that would be alternating so that everybody does have the chance to be eating out in the commons area where there are other kids. But again, that's social distancing. We're looking at different, taking all the tables we can find, like rectangle tables that just have the legs and putting two kids at those. And so that's all being studied and worked out with food service and our custodians. Yes, Reno?
Okay, there was a shared document with the committee.
Yes.
Why don't we give that to all the board members so that way?
They have it.
Do you have it, Brian?
I, I didn't.
I don't know what shared document you're talking about.
Every single board member has been added to the 2020-21 planning and it has all of the different documents from the state, all of our working documents from inside the school.
I have the survey documents and stuff, does that involve the nap?
No. It's, it's on the Google Drive. So you go into the Google Drive and it's the shared drive, 2020-21 School Planning Year. And that's been shared. Josh, please do.
And basically, all the work that administrative teachers have been doing is under the guidance of MDE, the Department of Health. They're planning to follow their guidelines.
Right.
Basically, they're just looking for approval to implement that plan.
And to finish the three plans, yes.
And I think we should probably, I don't know, reword the.
No, that's not the way I look at it. The way I look at this is I'm, I'd be voting yes for the 2021 Beginning of School Year Plan. When to me, the plan's not finished yet. If, if you're looking for a consensus from me to say, go ahead and start and, and keep going for, for, for learning in person, absolutely, I would say that. But I am not, I would be voting no on how this reads right there.
Well, okay, the plan is, we were supposed to create three plans, three models. That's what the state has said. We have an in-person learning plan. We have a hybrid learning plan. And we have a distance learning plan. And we have to have all three of those methods of teaching and learning ready to go. And we're asking, because of the numbers and the guidance from public health and from, from Minnesota Department of Health, to say that at this point in time, we would be proposing in-person learning to start the school, the 2020-21 school year.
I get it.
That's one of the three plans. That's the model that we're, we're following.
That's one you wanna have, based on numbers, based on all the information that our administration has worked and everything. You're looking for us to say, go for it.
Right, because those three, the three individual plans, they're gonna all be used.
I get, I get all that.
Okay, so.
I'm, I'm talking about other schools already have their exact plan, how they're exactly starting.
And there are other schools that, that have not started?
I mean, if it can change, sure, it, it can change. But right now, it's set in stone how they're starting the school.
We have that too. We have, just as Alicia said, we do have.
What did you say, Alicia? What did you say? Yeah, it's pretty good. Alicia, she just sent out a document, yeah. And it, I mean, it answered some of the questions.
Okay, is this, okay, I guess I have a question. When public health lady came out and they said that Moore has zero tolerance, then what? Are we gonna be doing that? Are we gonna be following Moore's lead with that, with zero tolerance and kids being sick, et cetera, et cetera?
Here's what.
Can we at least get some of these, can we get some of those basic things?
Here's what, I think I already shared it. This is what the state, this was at the superintendent's call last Thursday. They said that if students are refusing to wear masks, that we can put that into our discipline policy. And that has been talked about. I, as soon as the superintendent call was done, I went and relayed all the new information to Sue and Alicia. And that's what, how we've been doing this. Each time we receive new information, we share collectively and to move forward. And the suggestion from the state was, if you have students who will not wear masks, then you suggest to the student and to their family that maybe distance learning would be the best model for them then.
So before school start, are we gonna have a policy committee? Because I know MSBA came out with the masking suggestion policy. Suggestion policy, are we gonna have, is this gonna be implemented and then actual policy before school start?
Well, here's the thing, if you want that policy, we've created it. And it's on your August 24th board meeting. The thing is, is we, we do have the time. And so we've got the two weeks to finalize everything and bring it to you. And so if you, the policies that you believe as board members are super important to put into place, they either have to be created or, I think Reno had said something about Minnesota School Boards Association released a masking policy today.
Yep.
We put that into place if that's what you want. You're the governing board and so.
I guess what I'm, I just, I understand what Brian's saying. I'm not comfortable just, I mean, the way that it is written, it looks like it's, I don't know, I'm kinda giving a blanket go on this. I'll give a consensus, I mean, so you guys can go ahead. But I'm, I'm also very uncomfortable and just voting yes on this right now.
Well, I think we definitely need to decide something tonight 'cause I got half a dozen phone calls over the weekend from parents.
Right.
Saying, are they going back to school?
And what does it look like?
And it's unfair of parents not to tell them.
I've had a calls from parents.
I mean, they're trying to buy school supplies, they're trying to get some plan for their kids.
Are we coming back?
I was on, under the understanding that we were voting on the exact plan. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
I didn't know there was an exact plan. I knew there was a plan.
Well, there's gotta be some sort of exact plan of when, when we're gonna start, right? At some point in time, there's gonna be, this is how the first day of school is gonna be. This is how we're running.
Other schools in our area have, have, have sent out some pretty detailed lists right away. Like as soon as the governor came out with what, what we could do, there were some pretty detailed lists that came out right away. So I think voting on whether it's in-person or not is important. That at least gives the parents an idea of what school supplies to get and that stuff. And we're not trying to discredit the work that you guys are doing because we totally understand your job is very difficult. And you guys are probably over your head in planning and in everything that is going on. But this does sound like we're voting on the plan. That's the way I interpreted it as well, so.
But, okay, but the thing is, is that, well, is that the plan is what model are we coming back to? You, you have, you're gonna receive all three plans. We are required by the state of Minnesota to have all three plans in place.
Right, we know that. And you do, and we do.
Would it, um.
Can we change the wording?
Would it be appropriate for the?
Yeah, that's what you gotta do.
Right, well, that's, that's a choice now, so.
Well, the motion, I didn't hear what she said, I couldn't.
Would you repeat that, Alicia?
Um, I think if, if you had time to look at, at the draft and a family document, I think if you were able to weigh in on that, it wouldn't change your mind. But I understand what you're looking for and I understand what families are looking for. And I really want to provide that as quickly as possible.
Okay, so then, thank you, Alicia. So what we're gonna do here, we have to do something is to make a, to decide on the beginning of the school year. We know what day that is. And you wanna know what it looks like? Or do we have certain things in place in writing? But can we also entertain that our school district is, we're voting or we're approving to proceed with in-house learning?
In-person learning.
In-person learning? Can we do that?
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain, I'll entertain that motion. Would that be sufficient?
What is, what's the wording?
Yeah, what? In-person learning.
That the school year.
We're gonna proceed to.
With a, with a in-person learning.
Plan for an in-person learning.
Right. Is that adequate, Kathy, to get us moving forward?
And do you want to add if, you know, pending on, pending on the case rate data?
Basing on case rate data. Do you get that, Reno?
We'll change before our next meeting.
Yes, that's the thing, I know. And so that's a big part of it. But let's go forward with the understanding our administration has done everything they can do no matter what model, we, but at least we're gonna start with the in-person learning.
Yeah.
Okay, so moved, so moved by Mr. Hickerson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Josh Smith. We had plenty of discussion, whether there's any more, I'd be glad to hear it.
So this time I'm clear on the.
The motion to me, I think, to proceed.
To plan for in-person learning for the 2020-21 school year.
To begin.
To be, to begin.
To begin.
2021 school year.
So are you asking to amend your motion there, Mr. Hickerson?
I, I think his motion is just fine.
Yes.
Okay, so it's to proceed with planning for the 2020 school year in-person learning model, right?
2021, there you go, yeah, I like that. All right, we have, we have a motion, we have a second, and we've had discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for all that discussion. It's all very valuable.
Yeah, Alicia, are you still there by any chance? Okay, I want to, Alicia, would you please talk about open house? Because that is the most exciting part and the way that we're going to handle coming back to school in person with a whole lot of dignity.
Okay, we have dedicated two school days. Those are the two of those seven staff development days for family conferencing through scheduling and appointments. We first schedule out our students who are multiples, so they have, you know, many different kids in the building. So we need to schedule those families first. And then with the remaining slots, we schedule the little, the single children in our district. And we have appointments with classroom teachers. And high school teachers will have their advocacy and ramp-up teachers run appointments for families. So we have families coming in. We will encourage the mass and social distancing at the door. And with two full days of staggering and scheduling carefully, we can accommodate those things. At the elementary level, we will be taking some data, doing a family Q and A to collect some information. We'll be passing out all of our forms and having them completed on the spot. We will have a time to give support to the family, to the parents about what will happen as we transition through possible different models or what happens if your family gets sick or what happens if your school, your classroom has to quarantine? How does distance learning start? What are the technology programs that'll be a help sheet going home? And also just to kind of ask for some of their questions and concerns upfront. We'll be doing a quick, a quick screener for fluency and comprehension to collect where our kids are at, provide parents tools to work with their children at home. So really, I'm looking forward to it. We're trying to come up with some fun opportunities, a snack that maybe grab outside, a photo op outside, something fun. We, we know open house is a really big deal and it's, we don't want the kids to come into a new year feeling like they're coming into a penitentiary, but rather like just a different look at school. So some thrashing fun things are open to some ideas. This, this staff is brainstorming right now, what kind of fun things we could have in place. And then I just think, after talking with Sue from the high school level, it'll be, it'll be a really good time for them to see what might happen in virtual learning. Let's say high school had to do more virtual learning or go into that before the elementary did for some reason, then they are prepared with their technology and what Google Classroom would look like as well. One thing we did mention is that we're expecting all of our teachers to use the same platform for distance learning and we're gonna incorporate it into the classrooms for in-person and hybrid learning immediately. So that it's not a surprise when we go to distance learning. We're gonna use the first weeks of school to train kids on how to go into a digital classroom and how to participate in an online community. So I think, I mean, the plan is there, just sounds like we haven't had a lot of time to talk to each other. We're working on this plan, we're working on data. We got the three of us and we're doing the best we can and I am proud of us. I do wanna show you the stuff in the drive, so take some time till it's through it. And you can call me, text me, email me, and I'd love to share plans.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you so much, Alicia.
Are we doing the school pictures at, at open house still or how's that?
No. Nope.
I mean.
We'll move on.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, yeah, 'cause open house isn't even on there, right?
But it's part of, it's part of the model coming back. And Brian, it was really important to us that our, our kids and our family, it's, it's gonna be a welcoming reception. We want to have, we are so happy to have our kids back. And we know that there is a significant number of our families that can hardly wait to get their kids back here. And what we want is that opportunity to welcome the family back and show them what it's going to look like for that safety. They'll be able to see the classroom with the furniture arranged. They'll be able to see the sanitation station and how we're, how we're going to actually be doing that. We, we want to welcome them back. So it's like a reception and it's very personalized, individual, where every single count, every single student counts and every family is important to us. It's important to us. So thanks for letting us share that.
Sure. Thanks again. Okay, where are we? Number eight, Minnesota State High School League membership. Who's who went up this year? And I think Kathy had that number.
Forty-five percent, so.
But in any event, whatever the fee, and I think it's like, what, $2,200 or something this year?
It's $150 per event and $150 for the school. So I, I believe that was in that information I sent you. It's an increase of like $650, $700.
All right, well, we, first, we appreciate the Minnesota State High School League despite the decisions lately. However, we do wanna become a member of that, so entertain a motion that's so desired.
I made the motion to maintain to be a member of the Minnesota State High School League.
Motion by Mr. Hickerson. Do you have a second? Second by Reno Gunnerson. Oh, we'll have a discussion, okay. Any discussion? Kathy, you had anything more you wanted to add?
Yes, sir. Before you can take action at continuing the membership, we are required to watch this video. So it'll be a chance for people to sit back and relax a little bit.
Our coaches watch this video as well, Dave.
This is why we play.
They don't watch it at all?
But this is the same one that's been around for the last five years.
These people, they haven't seen it before.
And who gets to the championship? It's the reason why we do it.
The Minnesota State High School League's Jody Redman is passionate about developing the human potential of students. She's leading a national movement to reclaim the purpose of sports.
The pressure to win and sometimes at all costs is significant. Kids feel it. They feel it from their coaches, they feel it from their parents, they feel it from friends. They feel the pressure to be able to.
What do you think of how our culture values high school sports today? Certain words come to mind, and that of former coach and NFL star Joe Ehrman.
Disruptive.
Expectations.
Aggressive.
Trophies. Win at all costs.
Lack of value.
Win at all costs.
Missed opportunities.
Zero funds or.
Zero funds, misguided.
Unfortunate.
Unfortunate, sad.
When we look at education-based athletics and what a trophy means, I think it's about the experience. It's about what did we provide those students that was life-sustaining through trying to get the trophy?
Today's student athletes feel the pressure to compete at a high level, so they drop out of sports. Seventy percent quit by the age of 13 and they miss out on a big educational benefit.
There's a University of Kansas study that draws a correlation between kids who participate and are involved in high school athletic and activity programs. Students that are involved in those activities do much better academically than students who aren't. The research shows that the reason for that is school connectedness.
It's been amazing what we've learned.
Five years ago, Mounds View High School began to survey their students asking what they really get from being involved in the school's athletic and activity programs.
I was shocked to find out that our coaches and advisors are equally as important in the lives of our students as our teachers. It was a game changer for us. Our whole district, where we're going and how we've been. Our whole district, where we're going and how we value activities, it's not after-school. It's part of the educational process. It is no longer an extra. We've defined that, and it's something that we value every bit as much as what they do during the school day.
The purpose of high school athletic programs is not to develop college or professional athletes. In fact, most students, 97%, will not play organized sports after they graduate. Instead, these powerful mentors, we call coaches, have four years to make a difference in kids' lives, to teach them life lessons that will help prepare them to be successful in life.
Well, I will be honest, our goal is to win. Our goal in many sports is to win a state championship.
Winning has a place, and there is value in learning how to win. However, that's not our purpose.
Our purpose is to enjoy that experience, enjoy their teammates, enjoy their coaches, and learn whatever's at place on the field or the court or on the ice on that day.
Our purpose isn't to score at the end of the game. The purpose is the growth and development that comes through trying to achieve that.
Three objectives I have. I want to be a better baseball player, a better teammate, and a better person at the end of the year.
We're working with coaches to develop their own purpose statement.
But why do I coach the way that I do? It comes because I had a couple of coaches in my life that touched me and changed my life.
Joe Ehrman has been called the most open coach in America and a leading voice for change in how we coach our kids in sports today.
Why do you coach? Is it about you, or is it about your players?
A transactional coach is basically a coach that uses his platform and position for his own self-identification, for his own identity, his own empowerment, at the expense of the development of their players. It's kind of, if you meet my needs, my demands as a transactional coach, then I'll give you a playing time, I'll give you praise, some kind of plaudits. But it's basically using young people.
As a child growing up, I had a lot of transactional coaches when I was younger, because I was a very talented kid. Once I got to high school, my head coach, I didn't have a dad, so my head coach was my dad. And he's certainly, I'm more than just an athlete.
Transformational coaches basically understand the power of the platform position. They have the likes of young people, and they're going to use that to change the arc of every young person's life, to help them develop morally, ethically, socially, and emotionally. Transformational coaches mentor young people. And the mentor, you have to build a relationship with people. Transactional coaches do nothing but monitor young people. They move them from drill to drill, season to season, no relationship, no contact.
When I first started coaching, I only had one goal, and that was to win at all costs. I don't use that term lightly. I know how it sounds, and I'm not very happy with who I was as a coach then, I'll look back.
To be a better coach, you gotta be a better you.
And now, our focus is much more on what I'll call trying to build a team and family within the chemistry of our individual teams that I coach, and trying to find a way to spur our athletes to grow as, you know, get excited, can't wait, let's go.
Every day, Coach Troy Kors works hard to keep his purpose alive in everything he does, and he's helping his team's student athletes to do the same.
Nice. What three words would identify you as an athlete, completely you as an individual, and what do you want to get out of the sport?
Um, family.
Okay, I'll come.
Um, because you basically feel like a family, people might go to them for anything to help you with anything.
The word I chose was friendship, I love to practice, hang out with people I know, I just need to know them. I chose responsibility, because I feel like you have to be able to rely on others, and you have to be reliable yourself.
So I would take five, you have six, you have seven. I have three words as well, and mine goes like this. I coach to create positive relationships with my athletes, so they know and care about them, while striving to be an authentic leader, who they can trust, and to both work together to discover joy in our sport and through competition. That's a good time, about 13, 6, 5? Nicely done, well done, well done.
I'm mostly in track, just to have, um, just because I'm not the best doesn't mean it's a problem.
The big group's kind of like a family to me.
It looks like we're enjoying ourselves more. The idea of sharing something and enjoying each other's company and being a part of the sport we love to play. For me, that's been the biggest change.
For a coach to withstand the pressure of the current win-at-all-costs sports culture and to truly be invested in transforming the lives of students, there must be support. Support from school leaders, parents, and the community. For this to happen, we must want more for our kids than just wins, losses, and a good performance.
We want to give them more. We want to give them a significant experience that's going to help them develop into people that are going to live in our community. We want to give them a way of being successful that will sustain them throughout their lifetime, not just until the season's over. So we have to align school communities around this idea that we are purpose-based, we're education-based.
I want school boards to reclaim sports in the name of education. I think school boards need to make sure that we move away from this win-at-all-costs. We need to start building a system where coaches are held accountable for the transformative impact they have on the lives of their students.
It really boils down to what do we want to give our children beyond the trophy, beyond just the win and the loss, beyond the trophy case.
Hopeful.
Filled with potential.
I didn't want to bring carrot.
Yeah. Confusion and mistake-making rocks.
And every child feels loved and belongs.
Connected.
Greater relational capacity.
Wow, you can rock it. What else you got in there?
Okay, thank you.
I did not mean to interrupt, but with, with the motion to, to renew that membership, it is that we have to affirm that this body has viewed the Why We Play training video. Have to also agree that there will be an eligibility suspension program. There will be the code of student conduct violations, all of that, plus their constitution and bylaws, everything like that. So it had to be a part of this resolution motion to continue membership.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Pete, you still there?
Yeah, he's there.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to nine, personnel. Noticing nine C3 has been removed, nine C has been added, or nine E has been added, added. All right, we'll take all of nine unless otherwise indicated.
I, I do believe that you should remove for discussion the fall coaches, I and double I, unless, unless you're in agreement with the email information that was sent to you explaining the position.
Emily Mitchell, Assistant.
CI and C double I. I, I just don't know for sure if you all had a chance to read the information that I received at 4:30 today.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so the personnel, Nancy Lindboomer's still in effect, we'll take her first.
I make motion to approve Nancy Lindboomer, the family facilitator for the 2021 school year.
Second. Second by Mr. Hickerson. Motion by Reno Gunnerson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Ellen Wise, Second Gary Guidance Council for 2021 School Year.
Helena.
What's that?
Helena.
Oh, Helena. The motion by Reno Gunnerson, second.
Are we hiring her or not?
Yes.
Second. Second by Mr. Hickerson, discussion. Yes, we are.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Well, I'm just confused, because in here it says there wasn't enough time to interview her for the position.
That's for the diving coach.
Oh, for the diving, got it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All coaches, this is your explanation, Kathy, what? We're removing nine C3 because we didn't have a chance to interview.
Correct.
But we still have Sarah Miller and Emily Mitchell as our coaches for our swim team, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we can vote on those two people.
But the schedule, the salary payments are different.
Oh, yes.
Than what they have been in the past.
Yes, and they're, and these people are aware of that.
They are not aware of that at this point.
Hold on.
Because this came from Moore School District, because of our shared, openly, Moore Swim team.
Right.
And because it's a per participant is how the pay and the expenses are allocated, it would be that it's, Moore has, Moore has more of the payment for these, for, for these positions. And so because of the frustrations with Minnesota State High School League and not knowing for sure if the seasons are going to happen or when the seasons are going to happen, we're trying to be really, really upfront, fair with our coaches and making sure that they can have the 100% pay if it's scheduled where, where the kids are getting a full season. And so in, in my discussion today, it was that, and we were waiting for Minnesota State High School League, and we were waiting for the AD meetings to have some impact on this, and it's still, it's still all over the place.
Then we should remove it.
And so, so at this point, then there would be 100% pay, and it would be 80% right now upfront, and then 20% for, for work in the off-season. And, and that is the, pretty much what other school districts in our region are going to be doing. And this would then be consistent with, with Moore's other fall sports.
The only thing is, what I don't like, I don't approve something that these people don't know what's happening.
Well, they're getting their full pay.
They're just getting 20%.
Yeah, but they know that, though. Did we contact, say, there's what we're proposing the board to approve?
No, because there wasn't time to do that, and it's, it's based on, you know, I was trying to be very equitable with what, what the Moore School District is doing.
I understand, Kathy.
And so if you want to pull it off, you sure can, and we can.
I will go with what, if anybody wants to entertain a motion to this effect, the 80/20, despite we know they don't know about it, but they will be getting 100% of their pay just in different increments than they're probably planning.
And the thing is, is that they start their practice on August 17th.
Okay.
And that's why it was timely to have it taken care of today. But other districts are not doing this right now either because of everybody wondering what's happening with Minnesota State High School League. So I don't believe that the, that the Moore coaches will be approved until, until their end-of-the-month meeting, which is the fourth Thursday of the month.
Good. And willing to listen? Anybody, a suggestion, you want to vote on it or pull it off?
I want to pull it off.
Who does, who's that, you, Josh?
I'm you.
Okay. You?
I'll put this.
I don't know if it's fair to vote on something I'm not even aware of.
That's what I mean.
I make a motion to table CI and double I until our next meeting.
Motion by Mr. Hickerson to table those items mentioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, I get a lot of them, but we'll pick one, Casey.
Sir.
All right, discussion, we've had it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries to table that decision. All right, we're going on to D, which is Judy Peterson Retirement Back to July 1, 2020. Now, there's some background there, Kathy, and you got the correspondence, but you want to share anything?
I can't, because it's data.
Oh, data.
And so everything was sent to you. Everything was sent.
All right, then we'll entertain a motion to accept the Judy Peterson Retirement Back to July 1, 2020, based on the information provided in our packets. Motion by Mr. Peterson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. E, Jessica Knoll, Para-Educated for 2021, 20, 2020, 2021 School Year.
Para-Director.
Ah, Director, I'm sorry. Para-Director.
So.
Motion by Mrs. Gunnerson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Casey Heinz, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Ten. Ten is the 2020-21 New Policy, Tool 2.1, an addendum to Student Representative to the School Board, which I already said documentation on, looked it over, gave her input. I'll entertain a motion to accept the new policy. Motion by Reno Gunnerson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 11, Luthler Companies Incorporated for our new telephone system. I'll entertain that motion to accept them as the vendor for our new system. Motion by Reno Gunnerson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Casey, Casey Heinz, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to number 12, which would be Four-Day Week Flexible Learning New Year Program Update from MDE. And we already received that letter. Kathy, do you want to elaborate on that?
Just that this came the same day that I sent it out, basically. And what it is doing is sharing that the four-day school week flexible learning year has now been granted without reapplication through the 21-22 school year. So this coming school year and the following. But when reading this, it also says in the second paragraph, last sentence, "Therefore, the Minnesota Department of Education, MDE, will not issue further extensions of four-day week programs unless there is legislative clarification in the 2021 Minnesota Legislative Session."
Okay. And again, we've faced that before in our district, so. Any questions on that? Thanks, Kathy. Moving on, InGenSA's PFM update.
We had a meeting with four representatives from PFM, Lori Torgeson, and three representatives from InGenSA. It was a virtual meeting, and it was basically making sure that everybody was on board or everybody was in the know and understood the data and the projects and, you know, everything that one group was really presenting to, to the other. And the idea was to make sure that we've got that all cemented in before coming back to the board. And so InGenSA would really like to bring this back to you on August 17th. So planning a work-study session next Monday to be able to move forward with what now is there as far as the tax impact and how much, how much money there would be able to be used, utilized for deciding which projects to do, and then looking at, again, that new direction from the board as we, as we move forward. And so they're requesting a chance to come back. Everything, like I said, all of the, the numbers are there, some guidance as far as, you know, going out for a 15-year payments or 20 years of payments, and what we strategically need to do before the year is out. So I, I will share with you that we will need to go out for bonds by December 31st, and, and that will be cut B, because if we don't go out for bonds by December 31st, then the whole bottom falls out of, of the debt service levy. And, and that we, we don't want to have happen. So, so there is going to be some action that we're going to take this year, or that I hope that you would approve to take this year, that will impact the next year's taxes. And that would be before making the, the decisions for any kind of a referendum.
All right, so then you want to know next week at 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock work-study session on Monday, the 17th.
How long will be roughly?
I'm hoping no more than two hours, or I think they can get it down to an hour.
So I'm going to be out here by seven next Monday. Can we start at five? Is that too early? I can, but I don't. Yeah. Can you?
We've done the five o'clock maybe or.
I can. I can on Monday. I can make that five.
How about you, Reno?
Sure.
Okay, I can.
Okay, so Monday, the seventeenth?
I don't know if I'll be able to for sure.
You can get your shortly after five?
I can probably get you shortly after five.
Hold on.
Would it be better to go with a five fifteen certain time or five thirty?
I mean, half of my battles, I have to find somebody to watch my kids for that long, so that's half my battle. But five fifteen will work.
Five fifteen then?
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen.
How about Tim? We got an hour forty-five. Hey, Tim, what do you say?
Tim, will that work for you?
Yeah. Thanks, Tim. Yeah, you can see him. I can't. I don't know. He's behind me. All right, five fifteen on the next Monday then. Okay, thank you. Should we have another COVID update?
All I want to share with you is it changes so often. I mean, it's changing almost daily, and this binder is just one of the binders. I have another binder just like this for all of the regulations. And even during the time that we were doing like our sporting activities, they changed the guidance four times in just that, you know, like even a month's time. And so I just want you to know that we are trying to stay on top of it, and like I said, it changes all the time, okay? You can't discipline kids for masks. Then the next week, yep, discipline kids for masks. I mean, that's how frustrating it is for us, too, because we think we've got something put in place, and then it changes. And so please, please be just really understanding of the situation that Sue, Alicia, and I find ourselves in daily.
And we do, and you know, it's a lot of hard work. Like Alicia pointed out, other schools districts that have that plan, so to speak, they've got people helping them. We've got three people that are doing all the work. I'm not saying all the work, but I mean, staff input is very important, and it takes a lot of people on board to get this thing done, and you're right, it does change daily. And I think we're doing a good job adapting the way we can and with the people that are in place and the resources that are available to us.
And I do please invite you to take a look at, go out to the Google Drive,
Yep.
and it's a shared drive. You're all already members of it, and there are probably thirty different documents in there, different things that we've already been using or different plans that have been being discussed. And for those of you board members that have been able to fit some time into coming into school for some of those large planning meetings, I sure hope that you have found them to be beneficial. Those, you know, it takes a whole lot of heads and with great ideas. That's what's been really refreshing to me. And our staff, they are working so hard, and they want to make this happen for us. So can't say enough about our different departments and the staff that have been involved. It's just been, it's been wonderful.
I echo the same feeling. I'm sure we all do. Okay, anybody else have anything to add to that?
Tim is asking a question, Tim.
Go ahead, Tim.
Have you ever looked at the state with any financial help with access to fuel costs for transportation and the hours?
Okay, they, yes, they have opened up some new funding, and I believe the number was four hundred. They have opened up four hundred thirty million dollars. And that four hundred thirty million dollars is where they're going to be providing every single student with a cloth face mask in the state of Minnesota. Every staff member with a face, older kids, they will forget sometimes to bring a mask, so they will have disposals. And they are providing face shields for all licensed teachers and fifty percent of our non-licensed staff. Now, that is just P P E, you know, the personal protective equipment. But they're also allocating part of that four hundred thirty million for operational costs. So that's cleaning and screen supplies, technology, Wi-Fi, mental health supports, and also support to boost family, student, and educator support such as digital training, tutors, translation services, professional development. Now, there is, they have not released the application process, but we will all have to apply for our share of that money. And they said that the money is going to be allocated by A D M, average daily membership, and that that money, that four hundred thirty thousand, thirty million, has to be used, so it has to be actually spent. And invoice, I mean, everything, it has to be spent by December thirtieth, or you lose it. And what they did say is if there are some districts that can't use all that money, then they're going to be giving it to other districts. So we do have to ask for it. There are limitations, and that will help a little bit. That will help a little bit. And if you remember our E S R money, we already spent for the school year nineteen twenty. Our gear money, which is geared for technology, we saved for this year, and I believe it's sixty-eight thousand. And then, of course, this new money, we will also be able to get our share, but they have not released the amount or how to access it yet.
That is surprising.
They said by the end, I think by August twentieth or August twenty-fourth, they'll release the directions to get it. So thanks for asking that, Tim.
And speaking of the COVID, thanks, Tim. Speaking of the COVID, again, the coaches thing that handout we got today, we'll have to be addressing that, I'm sure, in a short time as well. Is that correct?
The coaches?
Yes.
Correct. And, you know, Steve, our new A D is, he has registered for Minnesota State High School League training, and I believe that training happens over the next day or two. And so he has done that. He did a great job taking notes. He went to his first A D meeting last week and, you know, took all kinds of notes. The thing is, is that, you know, because of not having those parameters, those straight guidelines from Minnesota State High School League, the A Ds themselves were not able to, you know, actually say, this is the way we're going to do it.
Okay.
But they have had the discussions in some areas, but no final, final decisions. And so I didn't give you a copy, and Tim, I'll send you a copy of that M O U from another one of our districts. And then you also saw the literature from another district. So there are some options for us, for you, to look at as we move into this school year, you know, kind of like the what-ifs if we can have a full season. And so that discussion has been happening at the tables, and I'm sure that it's going to be released sooner than later because everyone has to provide their membership to their, you know, assuming or approving the membership with Minnesota State High School League must be done by August thirty-first. And of course, some of our scores are trying to start right now.
Okay. Thank you. Item last.
Motion to adjourn at eight oh six.
Motion by Mr. Hickerson to adjourn at eight oh six. Do I have a second?
Tim seconded.
Tim seconded. I can't hear him.
Yeah.
Uh, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Most, is carrying meeting is adjourned.